I now call the Gardner City Council Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, meeting to order. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Cormanier.
Present.
Counselor Dern-Lauwitz.
Present.
Counselor Hardern. Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Haglund.
Present.
Counselor Koziskas, present.
Counselor Lamatt.
Present.
Counselor Tesoni.
Yes, present.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Present.
And President Tyros.
Present. Those who wish may now rise for the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Mighty God, we thank He for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward deep and sound decisions, and direct us towards the attainment of good city government. We pray He to bless, protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony in heaven. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted induplicate to the city clerk as they become part of the meeting minutes. Is anyone recording tonight's meeting? We'll begin with the reading and approvals of the June 2nd, 2025 informal and the June 2nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Counselor Cormier.
Move to waive the reading and minutes and accept them as printed?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, second by Counselor Tesoni to waive the reading and minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings. There are no communications from the mayor. There are no petitions, applications, or communications. Reports of standing committees. Welfare Committee. Item 11591. An ordinance to amend the Gardner zoning map by changing the zoning district designation for the following existing parcel lying on the easterly side of MA-101 in Eastern Gardner from the Commercial 2 zoning district to the Industrial 1 zoning district with Summit Solar Overlay, submitted by Attorney Christine Tree. Counselor Mack.
I make a motion to send this ordinance to second and final printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, second by Counselor Thibault Munoz to send this item to its second and final printing. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. At this time, there being no objection, I would like to go through the appointments committee items. Is there any objection? Beginning with item 11617. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Mario Gueye to the position of Board of Registitors for a term expiring September 20th, 2028. Counselor Heath.
Thank you, President Tyros. I'd like to, uh... I'm sorry. The committee met with the mayor, and we'd like to go ahead and put this in front of full council. We voted unanimously to go ahead and put this through.
Move to confirm the appointment?
Yes, move to confirm the appointment. Sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment, second by Counselor Haglund. Is there discussion? Counselor Heath.
All right. Thank you, President Tyros. Sorry for that. I didn't have my paper in front of me. Mr. Gueye was first appointed to the Board of Registitors in 2013 as a Republican member. This is a reappointment. Mr. Gueye is a resident of Gardner and has been in the position for 12 years with strong ties to the city. He is one of two Republican members under the general laws of the Commonwealth of the Board of Registitors. We have to have close to an equal makeup of the major political parties with three members being appointed by the mayor and the city clerk acting as the ex-official voting fourth member of the committee. Ties of the board would end in a no vote under the general laws, but there has to be four members that weigh it as as close to equal as possible. As he alongside Patricia Darby represent the Republican side, the Democratic side consists of members Marcel Cormier along with city clerk TT Seraphin. The four of them make up the Board of Registitors. The appointment committee unanimously voted to move this appointment to the full city council to be certified. As I already said, I apologize.
Thank you, Counselor Heath. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11626. A measure confirming the police officer assignments to polling locations. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through to the council, move the measure to be confirmed.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Dern-Lauwitz to confirm the measure. Is there discussion? Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The appointments committee met on this last week. We were unanimously in favor of this. This is a technical part of the election season that we do regularly. This is just the list of assignments assigning police officers to cover not only the polling locations and ensure that there's coverage all day, but also to ensure that there's coverage of the ballot being escorted back to City Hall from the polling locations. We had no concerns and are, you know, again recommending this for confirmation.
Thank you, Counselor Haglund. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11627. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of election officers for 2025 to 2026. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through to the council, move the measure to be confirmed.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Heath to confirm the measure. Is there discussion? Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Again, this is another typical and technical part of the election season, something that is done regularly. This is to confirm the batch of election officers who work the polls, many of whom have been with the city and the clerk's office for many, many years. We do appreciate their continued service in those roles. The committee met on this last week, and we're in unanimous support of this group. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haglund. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Next will be item 11551. We'll take a brief recess before taking up this item. Thank you. 686. Is there any objection to continuing? Item 11686, August Economic and Community Development Update. Counselor Koziskas.
Thank you, President Tyros. We had a meeting on Friday, August 22nd of the Economic and Community Development Committee. Director Stevens gave us an overview of what the department has been doing over the last month or so, or the last couple of weeks since his previous update that he had sent us in writing. And he does have Amy Assistant Director. She was actually at the meeting. Her name is Amy Uhas. She brings years of experience directly in community development, specifically for community development block grant experience. And she has taken many of the previous years of basically backed-up funding, and she has closed out all of those projects in years of work. And she did that within her first couple of weeks, basically, in the position. I would definitely say, as I typically do during these updates, to watch the meeting as she does explain some of her previous experience. We did talk about Mackey Park as well as the regional planning commissions, a couple of items that have been on our agenda for quite a while as well. They do have a plan for Mackey Park. Director Stevens and the mayor have worked with the issues that were stalling the process and have responded very well to the committee's suggestions to get that project moving forward. As we've kind of missed this season for Mackey Park, it is being used, but we wanted to be able to be accessible for all and correct the mistakes that were made that were found in, at the time, Counsel Tyros's report. And so they have updated us that they do expect work to begin on that probably at some point in October. They're going to have more of a thorough update for us at the next meeting, but the conversations have started and from a point where they have been working on this all along, but things seem to be moving as Verizon was responsive finally, and they got an idea of what they're going to need to spend on the fix of that. And it's really, it's a great plan, and I'm glad that they've been so responsive. And as far as the regional planning commissions, they are having some staffing challenges at MRPC, and basically that has kind of stalled some of the training that was supposed to happen in our department, but Director Stevens is confident that they're going to be responsive when they have the correct people in the right positions to be able to get some more training to his newly hired staff. And then we also have a new, the new business manager position has been filled as of the last couple of weeks, and we decided to let her hold off since she'd been working for just a couple of days when our last meeting came up. But she will be joining us during our September meeting and has already, Jason has hit the ground running and given some examples at the meeting of some things that she has done, like getting an inventory of space in the city and different businesses and different spaces that are available, things that they want to do on a regular basis that Jason hasn't been able to put his attention towards. So those are just a few of the updates, but I would encourage, just so I'm not talking the whole meeting, about what's also on video. But it's, you know, there's a lot of progress there. Jason is, I'm sorry, Director Stevens is very responsive to the requests of the committee, having a full staff finally at this point. With all the work that he's gotten done pretty much on his own so far, he's going to learn what a 40-hour work week is like hopefully at some point soon and go home at a regular time. But besides that, he's, we're really excited to see what he's going to be able to do moving forward because the progress that's been made in that department is unbelievable, and now with a full staff, we should see more moving forward. So we will have another meeting in a couple of weeks for his September update, and he expects to have another big update then as well. Thank you. And with that, I would say that we place the item on file. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Koziskas, second by Counselor Dern-Lauwitz to place the update on file. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Let's continue with Committee of the Whole. Item 11466. A request from Counselor Hardern to have an informal meeting with the Monarch Use of Regional Transit Authority, MARC, to discuss rider and pedestrian safety and route utilization and ridership. Counselor Dern-Lauwitz.
Thank you, President Tyros. I would move to place this item on file and send a letter of appreciation to the three members of MARC that came and presented to us the other week.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dern-Lauwitz, second by Counselor Tesoni to place, send a letter of appreciation to MARC and place the item on file. Is there discussion? Counselor Dern-Lauwitz.
I'd like to also thank Counselor Hardern, who isn't here tonight, for getting this in front of us. It was an informative meeting, got a lot of new information that I, at least personally, didn't know about MARC, so I think it was, it was time well used. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dern-Lauwitz. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Continuing on, we'll be taking up item 11625 next under Finance Committee. A measure relative to the September 16th, 2025 city preliminary election. Counselor Dern-Lauwitz.
Thank you, President Tyros. The Finance Committee met on this item. This kind of goes hand in hand with some of the other measures related to the polling locations and appointment of election officers. The council was in favor as this is needed to set up the city's preliminary election, and I move to adopt the measure.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dern-Lauwitz, second by Counselor Heath to adopt the measure. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. We'll take item 11687 next. Council Liaison, Waterford Community Center update. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, President Tyros appointed me to serve in his place as the council liaison for the Waterford Community Center project. Subsequent to that, the mayor appointed me to be a communication specialist for the project. This role, combined with the liaison role, was to show committed energy, yeah, committed energy between the executive and legislative branches to see this project through. Additionally, as the name suggests, the other goal was to improve communication between all stakeholders in this project and to keep this group as well, the council, updated. As such, I was enabled as and have been able to facilitate conversations and progress related to the Waterford Community Center. Over the summer when the change took place, I met with Growing Places, the CAC, the Senior Center Director, Alan McNally from the Historical Commission, and the mayor. During my initial update to you all, I had reported that I had had productive conversations with Growing Places, who's been operating for some time now and essentially at full capacity, and the CAC, who has continued to work on prepping their space to move in. Further updates for those two organizations include navigating minor bureaucratic procedures for Growing Places, brainstorming ways to keep their kitchen space cool in the summer months until a future time when AC can be used in the kitchens. At this time, mini splits had not been put in there. We weren't sure if the need. Growing Places had not requested it at that time. They, at this time, do not necessarily have the funds for that, but, you know, warm, hot summer days did make it rather toasty in there like it is in any kitchen. So we were looking at ways to improve that situation for the employees. We also spent time identifying their parking lot needs, which I will address a bit further down in my report, and just generally checking on their progress so far. Things do seem to be going smoothly for them. They seem to be very happy with the space. There will be future conversations with Ann Eagle, who's the director, about potentially renting the old teacher's lounge that's behind the gymnasium as additional office space for her and her staff. That, of course, would be, it's something they've expressed interest in. They understand that it would up their rent, so there's going to be more updates to come on that as those conversations take place. Similarly, with the CAC, I've helped Julie Meehan, you know, get replies and coordinate with city employees as necessary and city officials. We identified the CAC's parking lot needs. Again, more to come on that. Some examples of the things we've been working on with the CAC, you know, working with our interim building commissioner and other city personnel to ensure the work that they need to complete in order to move in is happening in a timely but proper fashion. So that ranges from walkthroughs of the space with their contractors, electricians, architects, as they continue to plan things, and to investigate the CAC's needs, for instance, for an external grease trap, right? Something that their kitchen's going to be required to have. Is there already existence? So things like that. Currently, there is no set date for their official move. You know, Julie and the CAC have expressed that they're hoping to move entirely all at once. They're still working on updating their kitchen, and they're still doing some other work in there that, so, you know, it's not all on the city end. However, we are also hoping that the bathroom work will be done before they, and that has gone up to bid, and that process is underway, so that there will be public bathrooms available for, you know, guests and frequent visitors of the CAC. And then additionally, we are looking into, the mayor's office really is looking into some grants to fix up any of the sidewalks and ramps in that area. Some of them are crumbling. They're functional, but they could be better in a nicer condition. So we're looking into those things, and the CAC is on board, doing as much of that work as possible prior to moving in. I did meet with Alan McNally from the Historical Commission as well. He's going to be heading up the city's archive effort to be housed at the center. We've had a lot of great conversations about what his needs might be for the project, just shelving display cases, is there going to be any air conditioning, climate control? So currently, all of the old Gardner news volumes are there, and just keeping stuff preserved. And he's been working with the schools, with the museum, and different organizations to collect things that he thinks would be worthy to include in that space. And then Mike Ellis, the director of the Senior Center, and I have had a lot of good, long, positive, and productive conversations around the Senior Center's eventual move to the community center. We've discussed their move to the first-floor side of two-story portion. We've done a walkthrough of that space for Director Ellis to be able to start looking at setup and floor plan options as he considers his needs in moving in. We've identified any internal work that might need to be finished. A lot of work is already done, but do they want to maybe have some paint put up here and there? There's maybe some cosmetic work that might be needed. But essentially, that spaces were pretty ready to go. You know, one thing I can mention through the mayor, our efforts to fix the entryway. So if you're familiar with the building, the two-story side where the playground is, the smaller, newer playground, there is a door with a step there. It has gone out to bid to have that full doorway ADA compliant, very similar to what was done to the main entryway, so have the automatic door openers. And included in that is going to be a new ramp that'll at least serve until that other work is done so that it's handicap accessible. So it's one small step, and there'll be a ramp option as well. And again, that's that grant that the mayor is looking into to fix up any sidewalks or cement work around the space. And then again, we focused on their parking lot needs. And so with that, you know, besides looking at the whole building, you know, cleaning up the floors, small aesthetic things, technical work, organizational work, shared use policies related to the project, all of that's been going on in the background as well. But parking was something that's been mentioned by all the groups, wanting to make sure that all of their needs will be met. So in my conversation with Director Ellis, we talked a lot about the need for a parking lot layout that's going to benefit everyone. I got information from everyone about their general parking needs, delivery zones, staff parking, volunteer parking, MARC drop-offs, handicap spaces, anything we can think of, designated winter parking for vehicles that are going to be there over the weekends and at night. That was something that City Engineer Rob Oliver and I talked about, as well as Director Dean Arnold, and it was a really good thing that they pointed out as well. And so Rob Oliver, our city engineer, is working to tweak and adjust, if necessary, the layout he's been working on that will, I think, provide plenty of parking, plenty of delivery zones, a commodity, you know, the tractor-trailer the CAC uses for the Christmas gifts, regular drop-offs, delivery trucks, and everything they need. So there's a lot of work that has been done. There's a lot of work still to go, but I'm really happy to see that progress is taking place, and through my process that I'm updating you all, the mayor, and we've been able to work on things quickly, and we're starting to have these conversations with the tenants, prospective tenants, to make sure that they're all hearing from one another as well. So I think communication's definitely improving, and I've been pleased to see the work rate improve as well. Thank you. With that, I would move to place this on file as well.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Heath to place the update on file. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. I'd like to thank the council for their flexibility this evening, and I think now we are ready for item 11551. Item 11551, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Russell Count to the position of police officer. Counselor Heath.
Thank you, President Tyros. The appointments committee unanimously voted to move the appointment to the full city council to be certified.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, second by Counselor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? All those in, Counselor Heath.
I'm sorry. Yes, so the committee met with the mayor, along with Chief McAvine, along with Officer Russell Count. Officer Count comes to Gardner Police with 14 years of policing experience as an officer from Jupiter, Florida. With 14, oh, I'm sorry. He has recently moved locally and has quickly adopted to the, I'll do air quotations, northern policing, as he has said during the meeting, of the Gardner Police Department. I would like to note that this is the first hire of the Gardner PD since the city of Gardner has chosen to do away with the civil service process. Officer Count comes along with high praises from the chief, along with fellow officers.
Thank you, Counselor Heath. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. We'll now take a brief recess so that Officer Count may be administered the oath of office by the clerk.
[unintelligible]. Repeat after me. I state the name.
Aye, Mr. Count.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I revere truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I revere true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
And the law thereof.
And the law thereof.
Now back in order, Finance Committee. Item 11539. An ordinance to amend the City of Gardner Chapter 8, thereof entitled Personnel, to replace Attachment 1, Schedule E, thereof entitled Non-Union Compensation Schedule. Members of the council, regarding Agenda Item 11539, I will recuse myself from participation due to the appearance of a conflict of interest, and as I've previously disclosed. This relates to a personal relationship with a member of my family who is also one of the non-union personnel members affected by this ordinance. Therefore, I will be stepping down from the chair and excusing myself from this matter.
Okay, and we accuse you of President Tyros, and if we accuse of President Tyros of ordering business of elections for President Pro Tempest in September 2nd, 2025, at this time, I open the floor for nomination to President Pro Tem, Councilor John Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to nominate Councilor Craig Cormier.
Second.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor John Lawitz, second by Councilor President, sorry, Councilor Kaczynski to close the nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. At this time, we'll call the members and let me know what you choose. Councilor Brooks?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Cormier.
Councilor John Lawitz?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Heath?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Haglund?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Kaczynski?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Matt?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Councilor Tivomios?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Councilor Craig Cormier.
So I have nine votes for Councilor Craig Cormier. Craig Cormier, you are now president.
Item 11539, ordinance to amend the City of Gardner Chapter 8 thereof entitled personnel to replace Attachment 1 Schedule E thereof entitled non-union compensation schedule. Your report from the Finance Committee. Councilor Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, I know this is going to take a bit, and so to begin, I move to suspend Rule 5 for the duration of discussion on this item.
Second. Motion by Councilor Haglund, second by Councilor Kaczynski to suspend Rule 5. Discussion on the motion. Councilor Brooks?
May I ask what Rule 5 is?
Councilor Haglund?
This is the rule that would allow any of us to speak more than twice and for more than five minutes, and is my hope to give a pretty thorough presentation and background on this.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilor Haglund?
Thank you. So the Finance Committee did meet on this last week, and I want to start by explaining the procedure from the Finance Committee. So during our discussion on the mayor's salary adjustment proposal, I offered an amendment to replace the mayor's version with the new version that I had developed. That amendment was accepted, and the Finance Committee voted to refer that item to the whole council. So that new draft of this item is what is before us now for debate. The mayor's version is in our packet for reference only, but the item as it stands is this version that was voted on by the Finance Committee. Next, I want to cover an issue that we discussed at Finance, but unfortunately was not able to be resolved until after the packet was put together. At the meeting, Councilor John Lawitz asked for clarification on how the police chief, the deputy police chief, and the fire chief salaries were built in the budget. Were able to get some information right away in that meeting, but there was still some confusion, and it wasn't until late Thursday evening that I received the clarified information I needed. It concerned the way the education incentive for those positions works. Because those incentives are calculated by taking a percentage of the base pay, it obviously really matters which number is considered the base pay. If we set the base pay on a number that actually already included the incentive pay, we'd be inadvertently giving a pretty substantial salary adjustment. So I want to apologize for that confusion and the issues I know that caused. My intention was not to offend or slight you one, and it certainly was not my intention to cut the salaries of those positions, and I'll be offering an amendment that I believe corrects this error. I know before I go on, after working in great detail on this, there is work we needed to do in the ordinances, or at least how they are made available, and the budget to improve clarity and transparency. So what are my intentions why to do this? What did we discuss and leading to a motion with this? Before I started working on this, I spoke with former councilor about what I was thinking. They advised me at that time not to do anything, that I wouldn't be able to make everyone happy, and that I would make some people very unhappy. This is a story we're familiar with, because 20 years ago was the last time this has really been looked at, and I can confirm, unfortunately, that they were right, as people on this list let me know how upset they were. And not to paint with a broad brush, I also want to thank the people impacted by this who reached out, though, to offer points and have good, respectful discussions with me. It really was appreciated. However, after the meeting where we discussed this, it was clear to me that the mayor's proposal would really struggle to get enough votes to pass. I know I couldn't vote for it. Based on the comments and concerns raised by other councilors, it was clear that there was enough doubt and concern amongst the council, and that it would most likely fail. I really didn't want to see that happen, and I've said a few times, I really am committed to getting something done here. It's long overdue. And we do have a problem with these positions being underpaid. It's causing turnover. It's making it harder to attract applicants, and that costs us money, and just as importantly, costs us opportunities. But again, I didn't want to see anything not get done. That's really what's happened in the past. We get to this point, it doesn't get done, we settle on a COLA, and maybe once in a while, a position is singled out for an adjustment. That's how kicking the can down the road for 20 years has gotten to this point. Maybe I'm wrong, and councilors do want to improve the mayor's package. If that's the case, amend it back in, vote it through without me, but it didn't feel like I should criticize and vote no without offering an alternative. And most importantly, I didn't want the end result to be that nothing got done. I'm choosing my words carefully because I'm really not trying to kick any dirt around. It's just how this process goes. Most councilors have voiced concerns, asked critical questions, pointed out errors. These are, again, things that came up in our meeting, but the proposal, that was before the Finance Committee last week, was almost identical to the one first presented to us in June. Again, I know I've harped on this being an English teacher, but there was even still a question mark in the grid that had pointed a few times by then. And I think to some degree, those things do erode confidence. So my goal was to take this into account, the concerns and questions raised by councilors, increase the amount of oversight the council will have with this process going forward. And I want to start by explaining the changes I'm proposing to the salary grid, like I did at the meeting, if you didn't get a chance to watch it. A top concern voiced by councilors that I thought was the affordability of this proposal. This version is less expensive. I'm also proposing changes to the mechanisms in the grid. First, it groups employees based on a few factors: their role and whether they require council confirmation. I also drew heavily on the salary study data to make these groups. Next, I changed the schedule of salary rate increases based on the characteristics of these groups. This was primarily based on the data in the salary study. I also took into account whether a salary had more recently been adjusted and why, or whether that position had substantially changed since the study was completed. For the employees subject to council confirmation, I set the steps at three years, except for the last step, which goes from 15 to 20 years. This makes sure that the council will have an opportunity to review an employment in between someone going to the next step. I do want to offer clarification, too, that that doesn't mean their salary would be tied to that timeline, it would still be tied to their start date. This reflects another concern voiced by councilors, ensuring a level of council oversight is put into any new system. As we know in our current system, any changes to ordinance require council approval, and I wanted to keep some measure of that. Another question I received from employees and from, you know, and we talked about at the meeting, is the three-year step and when they'll advance relative to their appointment schedule. I mentioned this a moment ago. You will advance to the next step based on your time in service, so long as your appointment is not expired. It will be entirely common for employees subject to council confirmation to advance to the next salary step in the middle of their appointment term. The purpose of the three-year steps is not to hold someone back in between appointments, but to give the council the opportunity to review that appointment sometime before the next salary step. Another important question, just like the current ordinance or the mayor's proposal, if it does not explicitly state that it covers a portion of your compensation, it does not cover it. So for example, some employees on this list receive a clothing allowance. That's governed by a separate ordinance. This does not impact them. Also, some employees receive a separate stipend for additional duties. This does not impact them. Although it is something we should review as well separately, to ensure that those have kept up, I think, with the times, the one example of something that is explicitly covered, again, is the education incentives. They're not governed by this ordinance, but I've explicitly calculated them here to address the situation that led to the confusion I discussed earlier. For non-council confirmed employees who are not department heads, I'm suggesting the more standard 2% longevity-based salary increase every other year. This aligns much more with the standard step structure currently in place throughout the city. These changes, combined with adjustments to the salary, starting salaries, are the sources of the savings. To be clear, the current salaries of all personnel in this ordinance are receiving a positive salary adjustment. Let me say that again. Everyone, all the personnel in this proposed ordinance are going to receive a positive salary adjustment, and will be placed on a step structure to ensure a future adjustment with tenure. The salary grid in front of us does not cover everyone in the current ordinance, and I want to explain why, as I did at the Finance Committee, and how I propose we address that. All those positions are from the Livering Golf Course. They have separate governance bodies that I think we need to consult to make sure that what we are approving accurately takes into account the unique circumstances of those departments. I'm also concerned that there may be serious issues with what was proposed, and why I'm suggesting we exercise caution and take more time to work on those details. For example, the position of golf pro manager, it wasn't adequately addressed by the salary study. It stood out to me because it was one of the highest percentage increases in the mayor's proposal. It also stood out to me because in the current ordinance, it's listed as a weekly salary, not an annual salary, and I think that's where some of that disconnect starts to come in. The current ordinance lists the salary as $1,295 weekly. If you multiply that by 52 weeks, you get $62,000, which I think might be what the new number was based on. However, I learned from the golf commission that the golf pro managers only paid for 40 weeks, two weeks a year, for $48,000. They also keep the profits from the pro shop at the golf course as part of the deal. So the $78,000 salary proposed by the mayor's package is a very, very substantial increase of over 60%. I'm not sure if that was intentional or an oversight, but it should give us pause and why I think we should study from those departments further before we approve a salary adjustment package that covers them. Which leads me to the redraft of the ordinance language itself that came up in the Finance Committee meeting. The first thing I seek to correct is the issue of positions being left out. Because I'm not sure if that issue, positions being left out, have been triple-checked and dealt with. My proposal overrides, but does not replace, the current exhibit schedule as a safeguard against any position being erroneously left out. The biggest change I'm proposing to the ordinance language is allowing for credit for prior service. I think this addresses the retention issue across all city departments, as it does not inhibit career advancement, it incentivizes people building skills and staying in Gardner. There's a real benefit for us to have employees cross-trained with experience in different areas of city government. A real example that I gave at the Finance Committee meeting, and I want to give again, is one that benefited us last year when there was problems in the Community Development Department. We had two prior employees of that department that still worked for the city step up and help fix some reporting and accounting issues. This was really important. I think it probably saved us money, and definitely saved grant opportunities. So I think the system I propose in Section 2 and Section 6 are fair, and will still give us flexibility to recruit and retain qualified candidates. It also gives the council a check to make sure the system is running as we intended, and there are more eyes on it. I also took into account a point made by Councilor Brooks concerning the awarding of steps. I think what I proposed eliminates that concern, and gives us more flexibility and should simplify the system. Instead of granting people steps, this sets up a system where we can recognize prior service and experience by awarding years towards those steps. For example, we have a clerk and an assistant clerk. Under the system, if the assistant clerk stays for five years and were to become city clerk, they would be eligible to receive credit years that would start them in Step 1, instead of the starting salary. I believe the way I propose this system puts in place responsible guardrails, checks and balances, and is a fair and affordable way for us to incentivize people sticking around. Again, there's a tangible benefit for the city, and we should recognize that. It's also important to note that this system creates eligibility, not a guarantee. Councilor Tisoni had mentioned about things being earned when we talked about this a while back, and it gives the council, I think, final setting. It'll also give us more ability to attract qualified and experienced candidates from outside of the city by allowing more flexibility in starting salary commensurate with skill level and experience. Section 6 specifically addresses how we could apply this to existing employees as a one-time adjustment for implementation. And I'm going to go through a few different sections now, if you happen to have them in front of you and want to follow along. Section 7 makes these salary adjustments retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year, this fiscal year. Section 8 prevents a loophole where an expired appointee could receive a raise by this system. Section 9, I think, is important. One of the chief reasons this has been such a daunting task this year is that it's been put off and put off for many years at this point. This section commits the council to regular, periodic reviews of the proposed salary grid. The reality is that over time, these positions do change, laws and ordinances add or change duties, and other factors we cannot predict also have an impact. So this mandate will make sure that there is at least the opportunity on a regular basis for further adjustments. It reduces the issue of favoritism we've discussed, invoiced and interest in curve. It also eliminates the issues of shy employees getting overlooked, or positions that may be further from our usual view getting left out. I also want to address here the most frequent question I received, and should have come up at our meeting, but did not. This section has nothing to do with COLAs whatsoever. This grid has nothing to do with COLAs. This ordinance and the ordinance it replaces have nothing to do with COLAs. It will, as it always has been, up to the mayor to determine what, if any, COLA will be proposed in a given budget year. So we can do COLAs annually if that comes to us. This does not prevent that from happening. I just want to make sure that was clear, because I know that was a point of concern. The other thing I'm hoping this will correct is the process. I've heard, and I agree with a lot of the frustration that's been expressed in general with this process. The bottom line is, I think we have room for improvement, and this will help make sure that happens. Section 10, I added this because this is a new system. I think it's important for us to have a check-in to make sure it's working, and working as we intended, and if need be, discuss issues and changes. A few more things I want to address, and I do promise I am going to a close, and a motion. I've seen a spreadsheet circulating that purports to show the individual salaries as a result of this proposal. I've looked at it, and I don't think it's entirely accurate, especially I don't think it takes into account the prior service credits, which I think is a major component of this proposal. To our department heads and our other employees covered by this proposal, I know this is not everything you wanted, but I think under the circumstances, and especially with the budget constraints we always face, this is something we can afford to do and do now. I'll add that, you know, for me, it is always easier to go and add money. It is a lot harder to cut and reduce. And so I think where this is such a big deviation from our current system, starting small, but still granting increases, is important. I also spoke with the mayor yesterday, and if this is approved for first printing, I'll work with him to quickly develop a detailed list of where current employees will fall on this grid, just in case he has any questions into my thinking, and take into account the provisions of the ordinance. To my fellow councilors, I appreciate the initial feedback from the members of the Finance Committee last week. There is no pride of authorship here, and I welcome this council to move forward as it sees fit, but I ask that you keep this in mind, as it was in the forefront of mind throughout this process. We need to be confident in our ability to afford this within our budget. I think the reconfiguration I propose gets us there. We don't want to be discussing overrides or service cuts or deferring capital improvements because we approved too big a package now. As a teacher, I can say I've seen other districts in that position, and we are fortunate Gardner has been smart in our decision-making. To the taxpayers, we need to address this problem. The piecemeal approach that we previously used was too susceptible to favoritism. It didn't adequately reward employee contributions, especially for the long term, and didn't incentivize people to keep working for us. There are plenty of examples of this causing turnover, costing us money, and degrading services. With that, I will stop there. I look forward to discussion, and I will make a motion to open up that discussion. I'll hold some amendments till later, so there's an opportunity to discuss the current proposal as it stands, and another amendment until others have had time to talk. So with that, I would move to send to first printing.
Second. Motion by Councilor Haglund, second by Councilor Matt, to send the item to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Brooks?
Just so I understand what we're discussing. The motion is to send the amended ordinance, I'm going to say, it's the Haglund amendment is now the ordinance, and that's what's on the floor?
Correct. That's what is on the floor.
Thank you.
So discussion on motion. Councilor Matt?
We have been given the difficult task of voting for a new economically feasible salary ordinance with a step scale to acknowledge longevity, which also includes COLA interests, increases that benefit everyone. There is no salary proposal or amendment that is going to make everybody happy, but we, as a council, have a responsibility to find a balanced solution and to be fiscally accountable and protect the public's interest in our decisions. There is no question that the non-union salaries are in need of an increase, but the issue I have struggled with is how much. We are approving an ordinance of salaries for non-union positions, which is different from negotiations, which would happen in a union contract. During union contract negotiations, which I have been part of for many years, which this isn't, employees have to be flexible and willing to be open-minded. At the negotiating table, they have to be willing to give up contract language and other benefits for salary increases, as no one can expect to get everything that they want. It is a professional process in which both sides need to be respectful to each other as they disagree. as they disagree. I feel Counselor Heglin's amendment to me is the best ordinance. It doesn't take away anything from anyone. The salary increases are better balanced with the city's finances. It does allow the pay increments with step scales, and for the first time, this amendment to the ordinance would allow for people to get awarded credit for previous years in the city. It's a way to reward people and also encourage retention of staff. This new proposal before us would require a review by FY '28, but allows changes prior to that. Again, it also includes a COLA annually in addition to the steps for years of service. I think this gives people free years of protection. At our finance meeting, it was said that the average property real estate tax is $4,000 in Gardner. If the increases for salary are too high, it could potentially lead to future department cuts, not getting new staff, not getting new vehicles and equipment in order to fund this non-union salary ordinance. We have to find an affordable and conservative solution that will not compromise the city's services to the public and leave department with limited finances. The self-started salary group and the mayor's proposal were basically one in the same with different percentages for adjustments and step increases. What we never received as a city council was a presentation and explanation from the salary group to justify the increases and how they derive to those, as I had previously asked for many months ago, I believe back in January. The mayor reduced the proposal from 8% to 4% across the board, which in my opinion is still too expensive for the city to afford, especially during these financially uncertain We can move one of the proposals tonight to first printing, as I believe we should move Counselor Heglin's proposal. The other options out before us are to just do a straight cost of living increase for FY '26 retroactive to July 1st, and continue to work and draw this out further on a new salary step system, or the mayor could put forward a budget allocation for the raises prior to October 1st, and he can continue to work on this process. As part of this discussion, I would like to hear more from the mayor about his thoughts on Counselor Heglin's amendment to the salary ordinance versus his proposal and where he stands on this item. It would help to hear from the mayor about his thoughts and perspective based on the city's financial position. Regardless of which proposal gets approved to go to first printing, it will still be subject to be edited through amendments and for further discussion. I will support what is fair to employees, but more importantly, I will support what's best in the best financial interest of the city. Thank you.
Counselor? Counselor Kuzinskas?
Thank you, President Cormier. First, I want to thank Counselor Darnallowitz, Counselor Mack, and Counselor Heglin for their hard work on this issue in the Finance Committee, and especially Counselor Heglin for his initial proposal. I recognize the complexity of this process and the effort that has gone into crafting a more measured alternative to the mayor's proposal. And for the public watching this evening, and to put into perspective the history of how we got here today, the mayor's proposal was in consultation with a working group made up of a group of city hall department heads. Moving forward, I will refer to that proposal as the mayor's proposal. The mayor's proposal has been before the city council since June 2nd, and since then, the city council received over approximately 700 pages of material to review. The council then met again on August 18th, which allowed us time to review the material provided. His proposal was referred to the Finance Committee, which met on August 27th to further study and review the proposal. Counselor Heglin then presented a proposal based off the information that the council had received, and the finance, and feedback as well. And the Finance Committee then recommended that the city council consider Counselor Heglin's proposal. With that said, I have concerns with the mayor's proposal, and I have voiced some of them before, both in terms of its affordability and sustainability over the long term. There are simply too many unresolved issues for me to support it in its current form. I cannot vote for it, and I would urge my colleagues on this council not to vote for it either, and here's why. I found aspects of the mayor's plan a little troubling. Questions still remain, like as Counselor Heglin had mentioned today and previously, the significant raise for the golf pro-manager as an example that was raised during the Finance Committee meeting. We still don't have clarity on whether that was an error or not, and the fact that issues like that are still surfacing at this stage is a red flag to me. Another major concern is the process itself. The council asked early on for detailed cost projections, but what we received didn't inspire any confidence, and a comprehensive cost analysis should have been included from the start. With the mayor's proposal, the city council is being asked to implement a significant change to the city's compensation system. And while I completely understand the desire to move forward and support that, I believe we must do so responsibly, and I do think that was the intent of the working group of the mayor and also of the city council. One of the most concerning aspects for me of the mayor's proposal is the potential long-term financial risk. If we adopt something unsustainable today, five years from now, we could be facing a Prop 2.5 override just to keep the city afloat financially. Overrides rarely pass, and history supports that. In 2018, for example, the city of Gardner did not pass a Prop 2.5 override to support its public schools, and significant cuts followed. Do we really believe an override will pass to cover raises we may not be able to afford? I don't believe so. The Finance Committee's proposal offers a more fiscally responsible alternative. It saves approximately $150,000 in the first year and nearly $1 million over 10 years compared to the mayor's plan. While no projections are ever perfect, this path gives us much more flexibility and room to adapt if necessary. One of the best things in Counselor Heglin's proposal that the Finance Committee referred is the establishment of a regular salary review schedule. That's how this entire process started, two years ago, when the mayor proposed selective raises. The council raised concerns about fairness, and that led to the broader salary study. A consistent review timeline will help us avoid these large reactive changes every 20-plus years. It may not mean every position needs an adjustment every time, but it will allow us to catch issues early and budget more responsibly. Maybe the Finance Committee's proposal is being too conservative and too fiscally responsible, but I'd rather err on the side of caution than promised salaries that we can't pay and spend money that we don't have. I feel like this is the point in the process where city councils in the past would throw their hands up and vote for a COLA, and the issue would be to be continued for 20-plus years. I urge this council not to do that this time. We are at the point where we can make a decision and move this 20-plus-year conversation into an action. It's important to remind those affected by these salary increases, which I think Counselor Heglin did a really good job of just now, is that there are still COLAs along the way. That was a question I had for Counselor Heglin after the Finance Committee meeting. He cleared up some confusion for me because I wasn't sure I really understood how these raises and how these increases went along. And so I gave him literal examples of specific positions and said, okay, so this person with this much experience and this many years that they put in, what does that mean? And he reminded me of the COLAs along the way, and that to me left a lot of room down the road that we have, that I didn't think initially from the presentation, from watching the Finance Committee meeting. And it wasn't that it wasn't presented, it was that I just needed to understand it and ask those questions. So I appreciated the clarification on that, and I appreciate the clarification this evening If this is done in a way that is not sustainable, then a future council cannot award COLAs, and at the very least, can make pay cuts, eliminate position, free salaries, and free services, or cut services. The Finance Committee's version is not the finish line, it's the starting point. I do believe what the mayor's proposal was also a starting point and started the conversation, and I appreciate that. I appreciate all the work that went into it, and I appreciate the intent behind it as well. I think we're all on the same page, that this is well overdue, and it needs to get done in a thoughtful way. I don't think this process has been the cleanest, I don't think it's been the most organized, but I do think the effort is there, and I do think the good intention is there. This allows us to make meaningful progress while still being cautious. To be clear, I support fair compensation, but we must balance that with fiscal responsibility. If we're wrong, we can correct course in the future. And as Counselor Heglin had said earlier, it's much different when you have to cut down the road than it is when you, from the very beginning, when you set a realistic outlook for the future. This proposal, meaning the Finance Committee's proposal, gives us a solid starting point at this point. It allows us to take action without putting the city's financial stability at risk. We also have a responsibility to taxpayers to make sure what we approve is sustainable. The fiscally responsible thing to do right now is to move forward with modest, reasonable raises. The Finance Committee's proposal does that. If we find we need to adjust further, we can do so next year or during the next review in three years. We can do so through COLAs. I urge this council to support the Finance Committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. Counselor Darnallowitz?
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Appreciate the explanations again and further elaborations from Counselor Heglin, comments from Counselor Mack, Counselor Kuzinskas. This is something that previous councils, as I mentioned, has shirked over the years and just, as counselors, has put it, thrown up their hands and given a COLA. I don't think we were, we were never going to make everyone happy, and I know the mayor's, as referred to as the mayor's plan that we had, wasn't making everyone happy either. This is a major step forward, and this does place a framework that we can use to build upon going forward. This is an entirely new, new system, at least to the city of Gardner, for these type of roles. I, as mentioned by Counselor Heglin, and I think he's going to address those, he had mentioned the fire chief, the deputy, the police chief, the deputy police chief, and I had concerns about the compensation there and how it was calculated and that we were doing it correctly, and it seems there corrections need to be made. I'm looking forward to seeing what those are, but barring any issues I had with those, this is something I'm going to be in supportive. I think it's something that is a giant step forward and something that, as always, we can improve upon going forward, as Counselor Kuzinskas mentioned. This is back before us every year. It's built into the ordinance that we need to review it on a specific date in Section 9 as well, in a specific fiscal year. So I hope the other counselors will follow suit and be in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first like to commend my next-door neighbor here, Counselor Heglin, for the time and effort he has put into writing his amendment. It's not easy work to do, and I recognize the work he's put into it. As we move ahead on this discussion, we must not forget that we are talking publicly about the salaries of people who work for us. In the case of department heads, we are talking about the people who manage the work of the city, who face the public day after day, and who assist us when we or a constituent has a problem. We have ratified many labor contracts after careful review and have never blinked at the added money these contract settlements have cost. Let's make sure we don't send the wrong signal to our own managers. After reading, and I'm calling it the Heglin Amendment because that's how it was titled, others have called it the Heglin Proposal, we're talking about the same thing. After having read it a couple times, I put it next to the mayor's original proposed salary ordinance for comparison. The first thing I noticed is that the mayor's proposal clearly states that steps are based on years an employee has been in the position and not years of service with the city, whereas the Heglin proposal in Section 2 does not establish a clear starting point, but immediately allows the mayor to consider years of service with the city or with another employer when establishing the initial step. The Heglin proposal does not seem to differentiate years in a position from longevity with the city. It also gives the mayor great discretion in setting the initial step for a new hire. Although these hirings would require city council approval, I do not foresee us as city council being too good a backstop. Are we really going to say no to the mayor when he makes the request to start a new employee at a higher step? The Heglin amendment or proposal also stops automatic step increases if an employee's appointment has expired. In my opinion, that is unfair to the employee because they do not have control over the appointment process. Control rests with the mayor and with city council. An inefficient mayor or city council could delay appointments, thereby delaying a step increase. While these employees will eventually get a retroactive step increase, I ask, is it fair to tell the employees to wait for their money? The Heglin proposal, Section 6, determines the step for current employees, unlike Section 2, considers both years in the position and years with the city. As stated earlier, they are not the same, and combining them may result in the perception of the process is unfair. The formula for calculating that credited time, to me, is also unnecessarily complicated. The Heglin proposal in Section 9 requires a review of the salary grid every three years. Aren't we going to be reviewing the salary grid annually when making COLA adjustments? In Section 7, it requires the mayor to report on implementation of this ordinance by January 1st of 2026. I feel that this mayor has been good about keeping city council informed about ongoing city issues. Do we really need to compel him to submit a report? We need to be careful about overstepping our responsibilities and getting involved or too involved in executive functions. Counselor Heglin has mentioned that his grid does not include all the positions, and it is also working with different assumptions about starting pays and steps. I assume that the city would, and he has said that the city's intent would be to address positions not covered by the grid at a later date. As you may have gathered by my comments, I am not going to support the Heglin proposal. In my opinion, it is too complicated, bureaucratic. This is the distinction between time in the position and time with the city, and allows about every step determination to be an exception subject to city council approval. My preference is to support the mayor's original proposal with amendments clarifying when future step increases would occur, and allowing the mayor, subject to council approval, to hire at a step commensurate with the applicant's education, training, and experience, similar to the amendment that Counselor Heglin had proposed near the beginning of this process. I do have copies of what I am proposing, and also a chart showing the net salary increase at 15 years for the mayor's proposal compared to other city labor contracts. If possible, I would ask for a short recess to allow my fellow counselors to review the information, after which I would like to retain the floor in order to further explain what my proposal would be.
There's no objection?
I just have a point of order. The, what we're doing is, we're discussing, we have first printing for Counselor Heglin's amendment. The mayor's amendment isn't before us, nor is it up for discussion right now, so I'm just looking for a point of order if this is appropriate.
I will defer to Counselor Mack that we will hold on discussing the mayor's proposal. And any minutes the mayor's proposal at this time, as the item on the floor is the Heglin amendment.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, I mean, I realize that I could move to amend the Heglin amendment to return it back to the mayor's proposal, but I will defer it.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
I'll do it.
Okay, second.
Okay, so I would, I move that we go back to the mayor, if that's allowed. And what I will say then is that I will, when I'm finished, I will withdraw my motion. I can do that.
Right now, there's a motion by Counselor Brooks, second by Counselor Thimo Munyas, to return to the original proposal by the mayor. Is there a discussion on this motion?
May I pass this out, ask for a recess?
I still, President Protem, I still have a, I still have a point of order on this. I don't, we still have to vote on the motion that's before us, I believe. I don't, and the city clerk can clarify this, but I don't think, I don't think an amendment to go back to a proposal that's not before us is still appropriate. So I just want clarification that we're doing this in the appropriate order because I think we would have to vote on the current motion in front of us before we can reconsider. we can reconsider, because we haven't approved or disapproved it before we can consider another proposal. That's just my clear, my point in Robert Rules. I think you have to go with the motion that's on the table. And if, I believe the counselor could amend the current motion that's on the table. I don't believe he can, if he has amendments to Counselor Haglund's amendment, that would be appropriate. I don't think bringing back a proposal that's not, not before us is, is by Robert Rules. Thank you.
And I'm willing to withdraw if, if.
Do you have any clarification to your amendment?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any clarification or changes to your amendment that you currently have on the floor?
Do I have an amendment on the floor?
You've proposed an amendment.
I proposed replacing the current amendment with a different amendment, yes. If, if this is going to create consternation among the council, I'm not, that's not my goal. I'm just trying to get information out the best way I can. But I can, I will withdraw the motion if that's the sense of the council.
Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, if we want, we could take a recess for you and the clerk to confer if you would like, and then we could come back and see what your, what your thoughts are on the current situation before we make any decision or before the counselor withdraws.
Before we do that, can you just restate your amendment that is currently on the floor?
So the amendment, the, the motion that I would make is to amend the motion on the floor by removing, I guess I would say removing it in full and replacing it with a different motion or a different amendment that I have here that I would like to hand out.
Will it take a brief recess? The meeting is back in session. Currently, we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Haglund, the Haglund Amendment. We have a motion by Counselor Brooks to amend Counselor Haglund's proposal by striking it completely and replacing it with a proposal he has that has been seconded by Counselor Thibault Munoz. So there will currently be discussion on Counselor Brooks's amendment, which is, to clarify, to strike the proposal on the floor and replace it with what he has in front of him. We will take a brief recess.
Thank you. I would appreciate a brief recess just to pass this information.
Yeah, we'll take a brief recess. You'll allow Counselor Brooks to hand this out.
Thank you.
Currently, we have Counselor Brooks's amendment to strike the language of Counselor Haglund's amendment and replace it with the amendment before the council now. Send it by Counselor Thibault Munoz. Is there a discussion on this motion? Counselor Brooks?
Yes, thank you. So just, just to talk about what, what I presented here, it's starting with the mayor's proposal. Section two, he talks about step determination based on years in position rather than years of service with the city. Section three is if someone is promoted internally. Section four, if somebody's demoted internally. Section five is when a step rate is effective, and the bold is, is the changes that I'm suggesting for the mayor's proposal, and that just says that future step increases will take place. When the appropriate number of years between steps has been completed, there had been no mention of that in previous, and that, in my experiences, could be a bone, could be an issue. Some people looking at it saying, well, you've got to be here for five years to get to the five-year step, and other people saying, well, I started on a three-year step, so I only need to be here two years. Either one can be right. This is just saying it would be the difference in the, in the years on the step rather than the five years. Section six was originally in the proposal, allowing the mayor to hire at step two instead of step one. I added language to say it's subject to City Council notification, so we would be aware that he'd done that. And then the next paragraph is in line with one of the suggestions made by Counselor Haglund at the beginning, allowing a hire to begin at a higher step than two if the mayor agrees that the employee's education, training, and experience bring them up to a higher step. And again, future step increases are when, when they've crossed a number of years between steps. My notes just talk about a couple of options with this. If the council wanted to have all out of, all hires other than step one, subject to council confirmation, then we don't need the first paragraph. You can just include that as everybody. There was also some language in the original stuff that talked about it being for department heads and not all employees, and that could be another piece of discussion. This, this is basically allowing any employee to be hired at different steps. And lastly, on section two, the original language was effective upon passage and publication as required by law. My concern is that I think it should be for July 1. I'm not sure that's correct, but that, that could be addressed similarly. The other paper that I handed out had to do with what the net increase at the 15-year step was based on the grid that the mayor had presented. In the mayor's proposal, by the time an employee gets to step 15, they basically have a 22% increase in their pay. That's compared to other contracts with the city. City Hall employees are the ASV contract is about 30%, Public Works employees about Patrolmen are high at 50%, but there's a big increase between step two and three, and I think that's when they become fully certified or sworn or whatever they are as officers. And then there were three for the school unions, which I realize this, we don't really have any control in, but it's just there for information. This is what I wanted to get out. At this point, I am requesting permission, I guess, to withdraw my motion.
If there's no objection, the counselor withdraws his motion.
Second.
The motion is withdrawn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Back to the initial motion on the floor, proposed by Counselor Haglund. Is there further discussion on this motion?
Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my fellow counselor, Val, for the work he put into that. I think it just shows how seriously we're all taking this and how committed we are to making something happen, so I appreciate that. Before I move into the amendments, if there's no objection, just a couple of things I was, I was thinking about during the last discussion. I know there might not be necessarily a distinction between current position and years of service. It was my hope to include both, as simple as that, I think, and it clearly states in section six, the total number of years in the current position. I tried to keep some of that spirit of the original proposal from the mayor with adding in the addition of those other years of experience. I also wanted to take mention with the council confirmation, I thought that might come up, and so in here in section eight, if confirmation is later conferred by the City Council, the employee may receive retroactive salary owed from the appointment expiration date forward if separately approved by the City Council. So there's not necessarily any chance that a late So there's not necessarily any chance that a late appointment would impact any raises, salary adjustments, colas, et cetera. I just want to make sure it's really clear. And it was something I thought of as I was reading, rereading my stuff, and thinking of other concerns that might come up. It was not my intention with this language that anyone would necessarily be punished or have to start over. With section nine, while, yes, we can take up colas every year, really that language of the three years is to ensure something happens. We could review everything every year if we so choose, this is really up to the council with our authority. However, I just wanted to make sure that there was not only colas, but additional checkpoints and safeguards to improve, to ensure that this was done. And while I understand that this mayor has been wonderful, this mayor may not be mayor forever, should he choose to move on, and so I'm setting up protections for future situations, where we may not have a mayor as wonderful as this mayor has been in communicating to the council. I think it's important to remember, it's not always the person, it's the position, it's the concept, and it's the possibilities that may come down the line. I also would be interested in hearing from the mayor, I know one of our councilors mentioned that, so if there'd be no objection, I would be curious to hear from him as well, through the chair.
Any objections? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, for attending, and councilors, for your time and attention to all of this, since it was first submitted, to where it's gotten now. I think a lot of the, you know, from sitting here and hearing the questions and the feedback that was given, I think a lot of it's valid points that have been made. I think there's a lot of good ideas that have been shared, moving forward with all of this. Just to respond, the main goal in the end, from the proposal that I submitted to what Councilor Heglin has submitted, and so on from there, is that, and I believe that Councilor Kuzinski and Councilor Mack both echoed this sentiment as well, is that there's something that just needs to be done with this system. The last time a pay adjustment was made in our non-union staff members, and I do want to just stress the non-unionist, between the department heads and the other staff members that we have, this is a total of about 76 employees that we're dealing with here, was in 2004. And prior to that, it was about 20 years before that. And it really has been something that has been cyclical, that every 20 years, we get to a point where we've got our backs up against the wall, and we have to figure out what do we have to do to keep our employees here, as well as maintain our competitive, compatibility in the employment market. It's one of the same reasons that the administration proposed the adjustments to the Article One language last year in the legislative ordinances, to make it so that our benefits to our employees were still as competitive in the job market as it was other places. Our non-union employees, our department heads and our staff, do tremendous dedicated work each and every day for our employees. The institutional knowledge, the expertise, and the just general work ethic that they bring in every day is something that should be recognized and commended, and that's why I think we're at that time. And it's been the 20 years, and it's time to just change it. However, the overall goal that we have is to put in the step scale system. And I think that that's where we need to be, in the end. Far, far, far too many times in the last more than 20 years, because this happened long before the last salary adjustment had, the positions were made on one-off adjustments. I mentioned this in the last informal meeting that we had, where the two lowest-paid department heads that we have, the council on aging director and the veterans director, the prior individuals who held those had them for 25-plus years. And it made it so that since there wasn't that turnover, that position didn't get looked at. Having that step scale involved in it adds that extra level, and takes out the subjectivity and adds the objectivity in there. So, I think that the proposal that's on the floor is certainly workable with us. I think Councilor Heglin and I have already talked about ways that in between first and second printing, we can work to address some of those concerns that may still be there, but also work to see where our employees currently fall, so we have a more accurate representation of where they compare with each other. Particularly now that there's changes that are being made to correct those errors that were in the first version of that. You know, some things that come to mind on my end from the notes that I was taking while sitting here involve the review, where this is a full, comprehensive change to the system, not just a mere ordinance amendment that we have, where we're making something new, rather than amending an existing system, where it just says this position, this pay, that's it. Is, you know, do we do the full three years as a long-term thing, but do we add something in the more short term, to see how things are going before the next fiscal year? Now, that's something that can be happening through the regular budget process, because it's an ordinance that can be amended at any time at the pledge of the council. But that's certainly something to take a look at, the way that a cost of living adjustment would impact the step scale, because at that point in time, you're not infecting a specific number, but actually a full grid of numbers, and seeing how that overall would go in that way. And then, as well as, you know, one of the concerns that I originally had, that, you know, we've addressed this evening, is finding the right place to place our current employees, who have been with us, who have previous years of service, either in position with the city, but if someone's in position, you know, we do have some department heads who have worked their way up the ranks and have been here for 30 years. So that may put them at a different location as well on the grid. So just making sure we're taking into account all of those things that are there, or if we get an applicant who worked in a similar field in a different community or in the private sector, and now is coming to see, do we, is there a way to look into all of those things? But, I don't think any ordinance proposal is going to address all of those in the best way right away, and at some point in time, we just need to get the system in place. And so, I'm certainly more than willing to work with the council, and Councilor Heglin, as we've already talked about, through those concerns, if this does go to first printing this evening, to make sure that all of those are addressed before it goes to second printing. And in the end, the administration's willing to work with any proposal that we have that acknowledges the work that our non-union employees are doing each and every day, which is the goal of all of us, in the end. And I think that's what everyone has said here, in the end, too. So, I hope that answers your question, counselor, and if there's more that you have, I'm happy to answer those, too. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion on the item on the floor. Councilor Heglin.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, it seems like this might be a good time to put forth some of the corrective amendments I had mentioned. There's really just two. One that I'll pass around is the fixes to the police chief, deputy police chief, and the fire chief. The numbers you'll see include the bachelor's and master's level for each position. While associates are included in the Quinn bill, the city of Gardner does look for a bachelor's as a minimum for those positions. And so, I built out the two lines, you'll see the bachelor's row, the master's row, and that would be this education incentive on top of the base, so they are both rolled in here. Whereas the holiday pay or the clothing allowance would go on top of these things, and these numbers that you'll see. Additionally, looking at my other amendment, in section one, section six, subsection one, I would be looking to strike that subdivision in its entirety, so that addresses the matter of, you know, employees hired before a certain date. And looking at that five-year minimum of experience, I think in order to maybe better be inclusive of all of our current employees, I essentially am looking to remove that part, where an employee must have a minimum of five years of experience in prior positions to qualify for that current service addition. And that, I simply take that out, and anyone who's working for the city should have any time looked at that they have of us, as this is a big change, and I don't want to set that minimum anymore. I think it's more appropriate to give everyone a fair shake to have their service included. So if there's no objection, I will pass those around. And then perhaps, we'll take a brief recess for your review.
There's a motion to amend on the floor by Councilor Heglin.
Second.
Second by Councilor Derna-Lauwitz. We will take a brief recess, while councilors hands out. Councilor Heglin. Is there a discussion on this motion?
Thank you. So amendment one being the salary adjustments for the chiefs. Again, I, as I learned more about those positions, I know Councilor Derna-Lauwitz had had some questions at our finance committee meeting, getting that information from the auditor, looking closer at their ordinances, and speaking with the mayor, I felt that these were in comparison and in track with the other changes I had proposed to the grid, that these were in keeping with those. So really, this would just be upping the numbers that are there, which are definitely not, I think, appropriate for this change. So this would be putting in what I feel are more appropriate numbers for that position.
Further discussion, Councilor Kuzinski?
So, through the chair, to Councilor Heglin, can you just, just for clarification, can you just explain exactly what these numbers include?
Sure.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, what I did was, I took the base salaries that currently are the case, so the true base salary. So you might see in the budget that the mayor put forth $146, $1,000 for the police chief. That is the base pay of 115, plus the maximum amount of 25% for the master's degree educational incentive. So these are just the base pay and the educational incentives. So if they, so if we hired a new chief, and they came under the bachelor's degree, the starting salary plus that level would equate to those starting salaries. So it does not include any other additional pay, but other ordinances include, like the clothing allowance or holiday pay, just base pay and educational incentive. And it looks like that's how it was done in the other proposals, so I wanted, again, keeping the spirit of some things alive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kuzinski. Further discussion? Councilor Derna-Lauwitz?
Just quickly, looking at these numbers, I know they're closer to in line, from what I envisioned, obviously, if this does get amended and the does go to first printing, give further time to digest them further, but I appreciate the work that was done here. Thank you, Councilor Heglin.
And Councilor Derna-Lauwitz?
If this steps to first printing, can you replace the sentence that would be updated?
Yes, yeah, and, you know, the clerk would include it, but those will be updated. I can get a more updated version to the clerk as well, like I did for the original packet.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this amendment for the salary grid? There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
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 Amendment number two, Councilor Heglin moves to amend the ordinance in section one, section six, subject subsection one, by striking subdivision A in its entirety. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Heglin?
Thank you. Again, I'll just reiterate, so this prior service credit year system outlined currently has a five-year minimum length to qualify. This would eliminate that threshold for current employees. Plainly, if a current employee at some point in the past worked for the city, but for less than five years, I'm proposing this one time, sort of as the grandfather clause, anyone hired before that date. And one time only, we allow that to be factored in. Again, just like any prior credited service, it's not necessarily guaranteed, but it allows for that opportunity, and I think that's the fair thing to do for all of our employees. Thank you.
Councilor Heglin, further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Councilor Tibot Minas?
No.
Right, so those two items have been amended, we're back to the original amendment that is on the floor. Councilor Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I just have a quick question. I noticed there's a section one, section two, and a section four. Is there a section three?
Councilor Heglin?
It does look like something may have been cut off. At what point, I do not know. And I don't know if that was a digital error, but there is a section three, and there should be one here. So if, again, if we go, if this moves to first printing, that is something that would have to be updated in the additional packet, but there is language there as well. That was included in the finance version, and for some reason, is not, is missing.
Councilor Derna-Lauwitz?
I do have the finance committee version here as well, I actually don't see even the finance committee version either, just the page changes there, so I believe it just might be a numbering error.
Yeah, could just be my numbering issue.
At least what we had from the finance committee.
So, section one, two, and then three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So there really should only be nine sections, and subsection, section one. Yeah, numbering issue.
Discussion on Councilor Heglin's general amendment that is now amended.
I have an amendment. I think in section two and section six, for the prior service year determinations for council employees, so the auditor, the treasurer, tax collector, and the clerk, I think it should be the council president who negotiates and proposes that in those cases, just because they are positions that are overseen by the city council. So the language of my amendment would be that I move to amend the ordinance to section one, section two, subsection one, and subsection two, and then six, subsection one, by adding to each after the word "mayor" the following: "Or for employees in group one B, the council president." I don't have it printed out, and I don't have it to pass out to everyone, but it's, it simply is just adding, "Or for employees in group one B, the council president." So it gives the council president the ability to negotiate and propose that in the cases of the auditor, treasurer, flash tax collector, and the clerk.
Second?
Motion by Councilor Kuzinski, sent by Councilor Derna-Lauwitz, to amend the motion that is on the floor. Do you have the language?
I don't have it. I have, I can give you the language.
Do you mind providing us the language, please? I know you don't have copies.
I don't have copies.
Do you have it in front of you?
I have it in front of me.
Can you provide that to the court?
Yes.
A motion and a second on an amendment to propose on the floor. Is there discussion on this motion? Council Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's not something I had thought of. I think it is an interesting point, something I definitely, a philosophy, I'll say, I entered into this process with, is that, you know, we do have those appointees. They are effectively our direct reports. They're part of our check and balance with the mayor. And I think, for me, that's something, and in wanting to include a lot of that, that strong council language in here, the reason I felt that was important is because we do have these appointees, and we do have these department heads who are, again, we're responsible for, I think. And so I do think that's interesting language, and I'm very much open to supporting that. So thank you for that thought.
Additional discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Amendment passes. Returning to the original amendment that is on the floor. Council Haglund, is there additional discussion on this motion? Council Haglund?
I just want to clarify that I will absolutely update the numbers, get that to the clerk if this passes, if this stuff, I'm, you know, fortunate enough to see my claim in the past, and I will fix that numbering typo issue with Google Docs, even English teachers. We occasionally miss that, so, thank you. So thanks for pointing that out to my colleague as well.
Any further discussion? Council Derna-Lauetz?
I think there's been a lot of great discussion here, previous meetings. Do want to make it fully clear that, and kind of echo the remarks of the mayor as well, of that this is a major undertaking, and that this is something that's been needing to happen for a long time. Again, a giant step forward in the right direction. A vote for this is giving significant raises to our non-union employees in this compensation schedule, and a vote no is doing nothing. Thank you.
Council Derna-Lauetz? Further discussion? Council Haglund?
I, I want to, I thank you for those, those statements, and I do want to also give, just again, some credit to the mayor and the work that was done behind this. I think it was a large undertaking. I think it was long overdue. I appreciate the initiative from the department heads and the mayor in bringing this forth. I think this has been a healthy example of, I think, the legislative process and how things take place. And I really am committed and passionate that something happened. Again, I'll reiterate that we can always add to this, we can always build upon this. It gives us a starting point. I think it is long overdue, and I, and I do think it is reflective of our appreciation for, for our department heads' work. I know it is a change, I know it is less, but we do have, of course, a responsibility to the taxpayers, to the City of Gardner, to the financial stability of the city, and again, it's always easier to add, it is worse to subtract. And so I am hopefully and humbly asking for support on this. I do agree that this is a great time to get something happening and to move something forward, so that we have something to work from going forward. Thank you.
Council Haglund, any further discussion? Council Tony?
Yes, I've been listening to everybody's point of view, and I do respect each and every person here and your perspectives on the salary for the, salaries for the non-union employees. There's a lot of hope. I hear a lot of hope. Hope is in the strategy. We need a strategy moving forward with Gardner. We need solid, definitive, hard numbers that we know that we're going to be up against as we move forward. I personally want to see us do something, as, as what the mayor stated earlier, we need some type of system in place. I've talked to other councils, I know that we need some type of system in place. I personally do not feel as though this particular amendment addresses everything that we need to address. It does address some of the things, from increasing, increasing salaries for well-deserved, for the people who work hard for the city. At this time, I will support it going to first printing, but I think a lot of things need to be scrutinized prior to this going to second printing. And so I don't want to slow down the process or do nothing, and a no vote isn't necessarily nothing, it's, there's a different perspective and a different opinion, so I will disagree with that statement. I think there's things that we can do as a council, and we need to work together to do that. And I just feel as though that we need to work together, continue to work together, and listen with an open mind, and that's all I have to say on this.
I think Council Tony? Council Kuzinskas?
Thank you. I would like to request a roll call vote on this, please.
There's no objection, there'll be a roll call vote. Any further discussion? Council Tibo Mina?
Thank you, Council Pro Temp. I mean, Council President Pro Temp. As the mayor's original step plan was designed to attract and retain quality employees, the amended version is ordinance might save funds in the short run, but we will end up paying more in the long run when we lose good people to other municipalities that pay more than we do. That's all. Thank you.
Council Tibo Mina? To be clear, the vote, the motion on the floor is to amend, not to send first printing, to amend the original item that is on the agenda and would replace that. So if this amendment passes, then there will be a second vote, because that item will then supersede the item that's on the agenda. Council Haglund?
Just as a point of clarification, we have amended mine with the other two amendments, and the only version before us is mine, so I don't know what else we would be further amending. What the finance committee recommended tonight was my version, and I moved to send it to first printing, to open up this discussion.
That was the original motion, so we're back to the original motion, is my understanding as well.
All right, then, the yes vote will send this first printing then. Council Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do want to thank you for jumping in on this, doing a great job of keeping us going and keeping us on track. Is this going to, I just want to clarify the vote threshold for this to pass, if we could make sure that's clear for everyone as well. Is it two-thirds, is it simple majority?
First printing is a simple majority.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Council Mack?
I think it would be prudent, any other, you know, changes and amendments that people work, you know, and suggest them, you know, to, to Council Haglund and work collaboratively before this, you know, does go to second printing. I think we need to have this as, as clean as possible when we reconsider it for a final vote, and not, you know, and, and bring things up, you know, we can still bring up amendments for the first time and stuff, but I think, you know, this is a work in progress, and I think if people could reach out prior to that, it would be very helpful so that when it's in our packet again, you know, that we, we have all the information and suggestions that are, or amendments that people want to make to consider at that time. Thank you.
Council Brooks?
Thank you. And kind of following up on that, I guess I would just point out that the mayor is concerned about having something ready for setting the tax rate, which would be toward the end of the month. However, I'm not sure that we necessarily have to get to a final printing of this by the end of the month, that we can adopt a money order to put to a salary reserve to cover the costs that we expect to have on this. And I say that because I want to make sure that we take the time to do this. If we're going to do this, we need to do it correctly. While I don't agree with the proposal, at the end of the day, whatever proposal goes through, I want to make sure that it's, it's workable and, whether I agree with it or not, it's, it's going to be workable for the people that have to implement it. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will please call the roll.
First printing.
To send the amendment, send the item to first printing.
Council Brooks?
No.
Council Craig Plummy?
No.
Council Derna-Lauetz?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Haglund?
Yes.
Council Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Tony?
No.
Council Tibo Mina?
No.
Vote is five in favor, four against, the motion carries. All right. Next item of business is unfinished business and magistrate consideration. There are none, there is no new business. Counselor comments and remarks? Are there any counselor comments or remarks this evening? Counselor Mack?
I just want to wish everybody at the parochial public schools a very successful and safe school year to the faculty, staff, and students who returned today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mack. Further, further counsel comments? Council Kuzinskas?
Thank you, President Tyros. I just wanted to make an announcement about International Overdose Awareness Day and Night of Hope. It is tomorrow, Wednesday, September 3rd. It's from 6:30 to 8:30 at Monument Park, and they do have the luminary lighting at City Hall immediately following the event at, at Monument Park. And it's a beautiful event, and it's something that's really important to this community. We have several really important resources in this community regarding overdose awareness, and they have several sponsors for the event that really highlight the importance of it. And so I just want to make sure the community was aware of that event. Thank you, President Tyros.
Thank you, Council Kuzinskas. Are there further counsel comments or remarks? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyros, welcome back. I just want to go ahead and give a kudos, a thank you to Counselor Haglund. You know, it, it, you've done a lot of work lately between the salaries, and, you know, I want to point out, even though we were just here for a while talking about the salaries, that's not what I want to give you kudos, I want to give you a good job on that right there, but I want to give you a great job on the Waterford School Committee, you know, center. You've done a lot of work, you've kept us updated between the CAC, the growing places, the senior living, you know, keeping us informed, keeping us updated, and, you know, going to keep us updated as we get new, you know, tenants and things there. Great job, great work. Thank you. One other thing, if you don't mind, President, I just want to go ahead and say we're entering fall sports, you know, so if you guys get a chance, go check out the Gardner Wildcats, no matter which sport that is, soccer, football, you know, go out there and, you know, go out there and go support the local high school. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Heath, for the, counsel comments. There being none, I would just like to wish all of our students at Gardner Public Schools a good first day back to school and wish them well this year. With that, I'll change. Motion to adjourn, seconded. Motion made by Counselor Brooks eagerly, seconded by Counselor Cormier. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion passes, we stand adjourned.
For the other who sees overall, as we adjourn, we thank Heath for the opportunity of joint deliberation and active witness during the course of this meeting. Blessed be the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the peoples represented we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.